For the evening of March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Jennifer, would you read the role?
Polinsky.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Stocker.
Here.
Crombie.
Here.
Guyant.
Here.
Jacobs.
Yeah.
Yocish.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
We have all eight of our city council members with us, so we have a quorum and we are ready to move ahead. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Flag the United States of America and to the Republic where wish it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item we have for action this evening is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. And a second? Did I hear a second?
Yes, I'll receive.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And we'll move on to citizen pure, citizen appearances and public comment. Adam, we haven't received anything. Is there anybody out there to hear knowledge?
There is not.
Thank you. So there's nobody there. I have nothing under business of the mayor. And now we're at committee reports and what I'd like to do is move up item under from new business nine A B resolution affirming the city of Sun Prairie's commitment to work with Metro Transit to implement a local spur of the bus rapid transit system to the Sun Prairie Park and Ride. Now, is Philip with us? Oh, there he is. Okay. So Philip, I hadn't seen you. I was thinking I'm moving this up and we don't have you. I'm getting this out of order. So if you're agreeable to that, we'll move that item up and take it up next. So what I'd like to do with this, I would like Philip to do his staff presentation, give us the overview. And there are people here from Metro Transit, Tom and, well, I see Ruben here. We know Ruben and but I saw somebody, I can't keep it there, Mike. So there are people here and at the end of Philip's report, if you would like to have, if you have something you'd like to say to us, the three of you, then you're welcome to do that. Once we've completed that, I'm going to ask Al if he's ready to make a motion to approve this. And then if we get a second, we'll go into discussion. And with that, I have asked Al to begin the discussion as your representative from the Transit Commission. And then after Al is done, then it'll be open for comments as you see fit. So if you're all satisfied with that, Philip, let's start with you. And then we'll see if Tom, Ruben and Mike have things they want to add. Or Tom, Ruben and Mike can be available to answer questions as we go through this. So Philip, take it away if you would.
Sounds good. I put together a small, a brief presentation for you to go through the staff report. So we're to go through the background, the results of this, of the discussions with Metro, a breakdown of the costs, what the service would look like, the potential for future local service, the pros and cons of BRT for Sun Prairie, and then ultimately the staff recommendation. So to start, this, oh, sorry, this initially came to the council March second, so it was fairly recent. And at that, this, at that council meeting, the question was asked, should we enter negotiations with Metro regarding the, the local extension of BRT? And council approved that direction requesting more detailed cost estimates, a commitment to providing local bus service in Sun Prairie when the city is ready for it, and definitive information regarding federal funding. So after speaking with Metro, we were told that the operations of the BRT local spur to Sun Prairie would closely match those of the existing Route 23. That route is approximately five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars with a local share of a little over a hundred thousand. So that was what, that's what we could expect for the BRT spur as well. Metro did let us know that a capital investment would be required to gain access to the BRT system. And that capital investment would include the purchase of one electric bus and park and ride upgrades, including a charger and an all-seasons restroom. If we were to work with Metro and become part of their locally preferred alternative, which is what FTA require, refers to as the, the actual system that they would implement, we would be eligible for eighty-five percent federal funding for all our capital investments. And the reason this is coming before you so quickly is because Metro is submitting their locally preferred alternative to the federal transit administration imminently. So this is something that they would like to do as soon as they can. So the breakdown of costs is fairly simple. The electric bus would be one point four million dollars. The park and ride upgrades, which would include the charger and the restroom are approximately six hundred thousand dollars. We would receive from the federal government, one point three million dollars to offset sixty-five percent of those costs. And then Metro would provide over twelve years depreciation credits towards that electric bus for four hundred ninety thousand dollars. The net capital investment would be two hundred and ten thousand dollars. So a brief overview of what the service would look like. So this would discontinue Route 23. And what we would get in return would be a BRT, an extension of the BRT, a local extension. So after the BRT arrives at its final stop at East Springs on East Washington, it would go up High Crossing and one fifty-one towards the Sun Prairie Park and Ride. So buses would be available every thirty minutes between six AM and eight PM and hourly. Between eight PM and midnight, this is roughly half a BRT service. So we would receive roughly thirty-six trips per day. Those trips would be seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. That's in comparison to the eight trips we receive weekdays now. In addition, Metro has committed to providing local all-day circulator access to and from the park and ride. This is something that we could implement whenever we're ready for it. And the cost of the route would be between three hundred and four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year before state aid. This would also, we would also need to contribute thirty-five thousand for paratransit, which is required for any local bus routes. It would follow that same route, the service area. After state aid, we could anticipate that this would cost between a hundred fifty thousand and two hundred seven thousand less fare box recovery. For comparison, the shared ride taxi is one million dollars prior to the state contribution. And after, well, we receive state aid and fare box recovery, it's two hundred sixty-seven thousand. So it's, it's in the ballpark of the shared ride taxi. So in terms of the pros and cons of implementing BRT in the city, the first, the pros, it's a significant frequency improvement. Like I mentioned, we would receive over thirty trips a day as opposed to the eight. And we would receive them every day of the week. If we were to implement it now, we would be eligible for those, those federal capital offsets. That's not something that we could guarantee in the future. We would have to apply for other federal funds that are competitive. The service would improve equity in that it would provide weekday service, midday service, evening service, and really expand the regional connection between Sun Prairie and the rest of the region. We would have the ability to capitalize costs into our, that are normally included in our operating budget. So I mentioned that depreciation offset. Normally, that's considered an administrative overhead cost. And that comes out of our operating budget. With the deal that Metro is proposing, we, we would have the ability to, to bond for that if we wanted to, because it would be considered a capital expense. The new buses would be all-electric. That's part of the electric charger that I mentioned. So the buses would be quieter and would be a more sustainable solution than diesel buses. We have received a commitment from Metro to, to implement the local service. And finally, the city owns two parcels at the edge of O'Keeffe with Highway one fifty-one views. With the improved bus service, the all-day bus service, it might improve the viability of the office-type uses that are planned for those lots. There are cons associated with this as well. There is a significant capital cost to enter the service. Our service area, the actual physical area that people would be able to access the system and interface with it would decrease if we don't implement a local service. The sole, the bus charger that I mentioned would be a sunk cost. It's required for the service. There is no offset. It's just something we need to implement to be able to have the BRT service at our park and ride. Next, the restrooms, those are already planned to be installed at the park and ride through the Parks Commission and the Parks Fund. While we would be able to leverage some federal funding for the installation of that, the restrooms that we would be required to install are going to be significantly more expensive because they would be an all-weather facility rather than just the three-seasons facility that was planned. And then finally, the additional capital investment into Metro will make changes in service and leaving the service that's ever desired significantly more difficult, which is just something to consider. So staff recommends pursuing the local bus, local BRT spur. It would provide a significant frequency improvement over the existing service that we have at very similar operational cost. Once we get past the, the capital investment, it would provide equity enhancements and improvements for the city because of the availability of the service all day and on weekends. This might be our only time to qualify for that federal funding. So in the future, even if Metro were to allow us to enter the system, we might have to absorb the full cost of the infrastructure that would be required to do that, which would cost quite a bit. And then finally, both Middleton and Fitchburg are planning on having, Middleton's going to have a local spur into their community and Fitchburg would have a BRT connection. So we would be potentially the only major suburban community without a regional BRT connection if we did not implement this. And with that, I'm available for any questions anyone might have.
I am muted.
I was going to remember to unmute myself and then I forget right away. I understand you offered to do questions, but let's see if, if Tom, Ruben or Mike have anything they want to add at this point in the, in the presentation. Then I saw Teresa, I saw your hand up, but I'd like to get in, get the motion on the floor before we begin discussion. So then we stay focused on that. So Tom, I'll start with you. You're the Director of Transportation for the City of Madison. Anything you want to say to us?
Yeah, actually, I was going to do some closing remarks, but now.
Oh, okay, well.
Be right in the beginning, but maybe.
You've got a, you can do closing remarks. That's fine. We'll let you hold off, Tom.
Okay, I'll do closing remarks.
We like to move along. We like to move along.
Yeah, you're efficient.
Yes, it's a fetish of mine. Ruben or Mike, were you going to do the same? Are you available for questions? Did you have something you wanted to say on the front end?
I did not have closing remarks. That's very confident of you, Tom, to have closing remarks, but good to see everybody. Thank, glad to be back. I just wanted to say this is, you know, this team thought through this really well. And there's a lot of moving pieces, including Phil being part of that team and Aaron as well. And this is an opportunity right now that's right about this time. Where all this federal money is moving around and we're really creating this regional system. So I want to really highlight that, that it's not something that we can kind of put off till later. It's really the opportunity right now, so.
Okay. And Mike is with Metro Transit. Mike, did you have anything you wanted to say to us or?
No, Philip did a great job. He perfectly keep moving.
Okay. So with that, let's see, Al, let's see if there's a motion to, make a motion to get this into discussion. So is there a motion to approve?
I move that we approve staff recommendation regarding the BRT and the local circulator option.
All right. And then is there a second to that?
Let's give a second to that.
All right.
Make a comment.
Mary, yeah, then would you start us out with comments and then I'll open it up to whomever else. I've seen Teresa and Mike to this point and then Marine. So go ahead, Al.
All right. So we might make an amendment that Ruben has to come back to work for us as a condition. I'll think about that. But getting serious, you know, seven years ago, we ran, some of us ran, and Paul ran, I ran. It was a commitment to transportation. Paul asked me to lead up the Transportation Steering Committee. And we've got great ideas and we had hopes, we had theories. And we said, we need to be ready. We need to be ready and look for good breaks. The brakes are coming towards us, folks. The net two hundred and ten thousand dollars to get started is a more than affordable price. The value to this city, the value to our citizens to have seven-day-a-week service, more than two hundred trips a week compared to forty trips for morning and afternoon. The value in the Smith Crossing alone is going to offset that money. They're improving house prices over there where people would be so close to that beginning. So here we are, seven years later, we're on the opportunity to really get going to Sun Prairie, the beginning of the northeast link to the rest of Madison and this Dane County Regional Transportation Area. This is a very good deal. I can steal Paul's favorite phrases. A big deal, it's a good deal. And I have to take a little bit of ego. I'm excited for the opportunity to vote on this on my last meeting on the council. So I enthusiastically will very much vote to approve this and continue working out the details in the negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Teresa, Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Philip, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the map for us again. That's where some of my concerns are at this time. And I just would really like the visual for everyone. Thank you. So what I'm seeing on here is that our park and ride really is the last stop. There is no real local service. The, what I've seen on, in the packet, the local service really is for the city of Madison on High Point Crossing Boulevard, which is probably very helpful to that area, but it's not servicing Sun Prairie. And my real concern with this is spending additional money. And we're losing the loop in Prairie Lakes. And we have no solutions to get people from their neighborhoods in Sun Prairie to other services in Sun Prairie. And that is a concern that was expressed for the last few years, and we've been told that we will get one. It kind of feels like the sticking carrot again, where we have to rush into another deal. And we still have those local connectors. We don't have the loops running in our community to really help those who don't have a vehicle. This continues to help those who regularly commute to Madison, and that is certainly critical. But I for one, if we're going to spend this kind of money, I want to really see a good solid plan for creating loops in Sun Prairie for Sun Prairie residents.
Philip, do you want to address that?
Yeah. So we do have a local bus survey that is going to be going out this fall. That was going to go out earlier, but due to the pandemic, we've been delaying that, hoping that things are a little closer to normal when we're asking people the question of, where would you like to get on? Are you interested in the service? And we have secured a commitment now from Metro. That's a new thing that hasn't been available to us before. And the main reason that we were able to secure that commitment is that they're opening up a Hanson Road facility for, for bus storage, which is significantly closer to us than the East Washington location. It's close to the airport. So we do have that commitment now. We would have years to get that implemented. I would look at this rather than a local service as the, the regional service, kind of the arterial through the area and our local connection would make that, that, that would interface with that, that regional connection. I don't think that necessarily the local connection on the circulator was something that was incredibly desirable. It was something that we did because we had the hours available to us, the time available on the route. And the alternative would have been having the bus dwell at the park and ride for twenty minutes. So to be able to expand that service area and allow people to get on in front of their house was seen as desirable. But it still didn't serve necessarily local needs. You couldn't necessarily hop on in Smith Crossing and get off at, you know, Target necessarily because you'd only have a couple trips per day to do that. So I think that there will be the opportunity for that if we want to embark on that. This is the first time we've had that commitment.
All right. Mike Jacobs?
Yeah, I have two questions. Starting first with Philip, you said that if we do not do this, we'll be the only, I'm not sure exactly what you said, the only significant size suburb to not do this. Can you give me a list again shortly of who is doing it and who is not?
Sorry about that. My screen's kind of shifting around. So Middleton and Fitchburg will both have access to the BRT system. Those are the, the main two. So if we did not have access, we would be an outlier amongst them.
Amongst just those two communities? Okay. My next question is for either Connie or Aaron, which is Philip mentioned that we can do this, we can bond for this. Is there any advantage to not doing that?
There is. Alder Jacobs, this is Aaron. I'll to answer that one is, our proposal would be to phone this either two ways. One is if the city council, as you know, we discussed our five-year financial management plan with you at the last meeting, and one of the recommendations from us was to look at breaking expenditure restraint in two thousand and twenty-two. At that point, we could move money from fund balance to, to cover this expense. The other option, if we weren't to break expenditure restraint, would be to use expenditure restraint grant dollars and apply them. So we likely would not be borrowing much to do this project. We assumed around eighty thousand dollars, roughly eighty to hundred thousand dollars that we'd actually borrow for, and that's more for the infrastructure around the park and ride versus the, the bus service, because we are able to use park impact fees for, for a portion of the, the project, since this will be a trailhead. So that's where the, the park impact fee dollars come into play. So a very small amount would be borrowed.
All right. Marine?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I had similar, similar questions that Alder Stevens had. But you know, we have to remember, this is, I think, long-term. This is a long-term decision that we're making. And I am wondering, I'm a little, maybe Philip will have to explain this to me, but the bus route that we currently have right now, that are we, from my understanding, the route, the B or the, the BRT route is actually not going to go through O'Keeffe, or is it?
It would not. It would sever the local service from the regional, so it would stop at the park and ride.
Okay. And I understand when it comes to equity with the seven days a week and, you know, that, that's wonderful. However, my concern is the equity when it comes to people that really need the service, other neighborhood, you know, going out to other neighborhoods, the other routes. How can you like elaborate on, you know, when we're going, when we would be able to, I know you said you're sending out a survey, but do you have any idea? Because I would hate to have that route we currently have right now just disappear. And so can you elaborate on that for me?
Can I, before, Philip, before you respond, if I could help a little bit with, with this, help the city council with this is, the BRT service, and I think Philip mentioned it kind of as that collector, that arterial, think of BRT kind of as the backbone of, of our service coming into the city. It's really separate from the internal network, the circulator route. They're really two different items and it gets complicated because we have that little circulator on our service right now that Philip has kind of explained was kind of a, almost like a leftover, right? There was hours available and, and, and we made it work. But the BRT is the backbone of, of the service going into Sun Prairie. We can add in, at the city council's desire, local service that has destinations wherever we would like. So if there's destinations that the city council feel are important for folks to travel within the community. So for example, high school students to get to Prairie Lakes for an after-school job, so to speak. Seniors to, from Colonial View and Colonial Club to a, a area where there's a lot of medical facilities so that they can get to appointments. We can design that how we would like with destinations that we would like. It's really a separate piece of this from the BRT discussion. Where the BRT comes in is it allows a resident to go from Sun Prairie all the way over to West Town Mall in one seat without, without transferring and having that service available to them throughout the day instead of just peak times and also on weekends instead of just weekdays. So the BRT service really makes that connection for us to the other areas in the region. That local service, we can design however we would like, whatever destinations we would like, whatever intervals that we would like. Obviously, there's a cost associated with that, but Madison Metro's been very accommodating to us in saying that they could make that service work to, to meet our needs. And so even though they're kind of all kind of connected, they're really two separate matters for, for consideration. And so I hope that, that helps.
Yeah, that does. The, the American Parkway, the, the route that they have there now. So maybe this is Madison Metro that can answer this for me. Do you, can you tell me, are you still going to continue with that same route? What, if we do approve this BRT to go, you know, to American Parkway? Are you still going to have that, that, that other route too? And I believe that's just a short term, or that's just a, a route that's only opens certain times of the day too.
So what we're doing is we're taking, we're, we're removing Routes twenty-three and twenty-six. Twenty-six is the other route that goes through American Center. And we're replacing it with this BRT service. And so that's one of the reasons that the Sun Prairie Service would go through the High Crossing area, because that was, that was one of the areas served by Route twenty-six. So that's just kind of a detail of how things are being shaken up and re-combobulated. But so, so anyway, Route twenty-six operates all day, every day, every thirty minutes. And so the BRT, the BRT route would, would, would be pretty much a straightforward one-to-one replacement. It gets a little bit complicated because the BRT service runs every fifteen minutes, not every thirty minutes. And so it's convenient because we need something to do with every other bus. We don't want every bus through American Center because it doesn't need to be.
Yeah. I didn't realize that, I didn't realize that it ran every thirty minutes because at one time it was only like four or five times a day. But that's in the nineties.
Okay, yeah. So, so we had another route that went up there is Route twenty-five. And that was just a rush hour route that was really designed.
Maybe that's the one I'm thinking of.
Out in the morning to American Family, but that has been running for about a year.
Because I actually remember working in Madison and thinking, how can I get there if I don't have a car? And it just didn't work out at that time for me because of the timing of the bus route. But and then I had one other, I know that we had talked about, in the past, we've talked about the own, having our own bus system in Sun Prairie, similar to like how Manona does. And I'm just wondering, like, if we, I mean, this is just something I'm just throwing out. It's not that I don't support what this, that we, what we're doing here in Madison Metro. But if we did do that, would we not be able to take our buses into Madison? Is there something about not taking the buses into Madison or that we wouldn't be allowed to or?
No, I believe we would be able.
Probably the routes would be.
Yeah, I believe we would be able to do that if we operated that, that way, Alder Crombie. Well, the direction we've been operating under, from a city staff perspective, because we felt that this is where the council was, so we're happy to, to receive guidance, is that there was a significant benefit to be, being part of a larger network, larger options for folks to travel and to have that regional perspective, right? Where it's all, it's all connected and that our residents would find it desirable to be able to get to locations outside of Sun Prairie easily, such as the airport, West Town Mall, wherever it might be where they, where they would need to go, that there was a, a significant benefit to being part of that larger network that Madison Metro provides.
And under that, we did receive, prior to the pandemic, information about our riders and how they are. prior to the pandemic, information about our riders and how they are interfacing with our service. And roughly 45% of our riders had metro passes. So they were receiving that from their employers or their school. So we we know that there's a strong desire for metro service from that perspective.
Okay, and then Alder Jacobs had mentioned, he had asked about the other communities that that in one of them was Fitchburg and Middleton that have this, the that do have this BRT. And is Verona one of them too or not? Because that's a, that's in one of the major, one of the bigger cities in Dane County.
No, they they do not have access to the system. They do have their commuter bus to Epic, but that there aren't any plans to bring that to the BRT.
The Verona area, okay, 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 that's all I have right now.
Mike Jacobs, I saw your hand up again.
Yeah, this is a question from Mike. I just want to know in your estimate, how successful was bus route number 25?
25 to American Center. It had very low levels of service, but the but it had a decent number of people using it. I don't have numbers off the top of my head, but I have seen, you know, it always had sort of a comfortable seated load. You know, our our office is on on the Near East Side, so bus drives out east Wash, I usually notice. It it had, it had, it had, you know, it had decent ridership for, it only had two trips a day. It had two going out in the morning and two coming in in the evening. So the the overall ridership was very low. But, you know, it was, it was sort of okay.
Terry McElroy.
Thank you, your honor. Philip, this question is for you. What information or data can you give me on the ridership prior to the pandemic?
Can share my screen and show you that. Let me know if you can see my screen.
I can, thank you.
Okay, so prior to the pandemic, we were receiving, we got up to 20, 2,693 rides per month, and you see that since the pandemic has hit and the state offices have been closed, ridership has dropped off quite a bit. It has been going up slowly, kind of ebb and flow, but until the state offices resume in-person operation, I would imagine that that would remain low. That said, the 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 ridership was was strong from the beginning. On our peak days, we were seeing 75% utilization of the park and ride, generally towards the end, I guess, of the the normal times. It was over 50% capacity most days.
Okay, thank you. And my second question is, actually, it's not a question, it's a statement. There is no guarantee moving forward that once COVID is over that people are going to go back to their offices. I mean, here in the city of Sun Prairie, we've actually talked about possibly some individuals who are employees not coming back to the building every day. So, you know, I would think that the same thing is going to happen with other businesses. And I do know for a fact that my, even my daughter-in-law will be working from home 95% of the time, once the pandemic is over. That's going to affect the ridership going into Madison, and I I'm hoping everybody is considering that. Thank you.
Bob Jokich.
I just wanted to mention as far as ridership, I retired from the UW three years ago. And for the 10 years prior to that, I was driving to Easttown and taking the bus into the university. Largely, one important factor was, and I think Philip mentioned this, was the subsidy the university provided for buses to bus travel. And I think some of, if if I'm not wrong on this, I think Dane County and maybe some other large employers provide that. So, you know, there was a number of people that were doing the same thing I was in the past of driving down to the Easttown area from Sun Prairie and then picking up the bus along the way there somewhere. So I I think there's a great deal of of interest in this in the Sun Prairie area.
Steve Stocker.
Thank you, your honor. Excuse me. My comments are going to be similar to Alder Stevens. And again, I guess I have to start out with, here we go again, last minute, we need to do this or else we're going to lose it. Have we heard that before? We need to put in a park and ride immediately. We pay twice as much for it, or we lose it. I I don't know. I just have a real problem with Metro. I have, from Trust Factor and raising their costs from before. I've said it before, and I'm going to get off that soapbox now. But as far as this proposal goes, you know, I looked at this, I love, love the thought of electric buses. I think that's the way to go, and I think it's the future. But I just think the timing is not right for this. I think the timing in the future is going to be so much better. And to hear if we don't act on this now, we're going to lose federal funding. It's never going to be here again. I don't believe it. Federal funding seems to be there almost every year. So I don't, I don't, I guess I don't subscribe to that theory. Almost like buy this car now or else you're going to lose it. You know, we promised that we would do a, at least in some of our campaigns, we would do a bus or some type of service, get our folks into Madison. Our good was getting them into Easttown. Better was getting them down to the Capitol. So I look at this right now, is this a need or nice to have? When we look at all the other priorities in our budget, to me, this is strictly a nice to have. This is not a need. And like Alder Stevens said, this doesn't hit any of my district. And so why would my constituents want this? You know, whether it's a future thing, we've heard about that too. The carrot's been hanging out there. This could be a future item. Prove this now, this will be in the future. We haven't seen anything. And so I don't subscribe to this. I don't, you know, when I look at it, you know, as I would look at my own personal budget, I would love an electric car, but do I have other priorities? Certainly. I'm sure some of you have other priorities also, college education for your kids or grandchildren. You put aside that electric car. I think the timing is wrong. I think we have other priorities that we should wait until the priorities we earmarked are there until we proceed.
Terry McElroy.
Thank you, your honor. I would tend to follow exactly what Alder Stocker just said. I do have a question for Philip. Are we guaranteed this federal funding, this federal grant at the, to the tune of 65% of the overall costs?
Correct. That's that's the reason for moving now. If we're part of that locally preferred alternative, we get a guaranteed 65% federal funding. In the future, we very well might be eligible for federal funding, but would be a competitive process, and there's no guarantee that we would get it and no guarantee that we would be admitted into the system.
Okay, thank you very much.
El Guiant, I saw your hand up.
So correct me if I'm wrong, Philip, but I believe the past data shows that more than 5,000 Sun Prairie residents drive into Central Madison or the West Side every weekday to work, 5,000. And many of those would benefit from the BRT, the local circulator. I hope those of you who will be on the council when that's designed could connect to the park and ride. And that's not the only local circulator. I believe as this community grows, we'll have more local circulators. We should push for that. But 5,000 folks could benefit, some of those marginal income. And we drive their cars shortways and get on a bus and save a lot of money from not parking downtown. And, you know, I'm with all of you wanting a local circulator to serve folks. That's always been my goal. So this is going to be a huge benefit for Sun Prairie, all income levels, particularly if we get the local circulator there. So thank you.
Steve Stocker.
Thank you, your honor. If we're talking 5,000 people driving in, why are we only looking at 25 people a day riding on this? I looked at the number, if it's 500 per month, that's 125 a week and 25 per day, Monday through Friday. 25 people per day, and we're investing this amount. Is that, I mean, is that true, Philip?
Yeah, that's correct. The service was still in its infancy. One of the things that I mentioned initially early on when Route 23 was established is we really can't look at the ridership with any level of certainty for two years when people are able to make their lifestyle choices around the service, feel confident that it's going to be there. And the pandemic has certainly thrown a wrench into some of that thought process there. So from the ridership that we saw from a service that was in its infancy, it was, it was, it was strong. It would have certainly improved over time if things would have headed down the same path.
And a follow-up question. Alder McElroy asked a great question about the federal funding. So if we approve what we approved tonight, we do not have a guarantee, is that correct, that we will have federal funding?
No, no, we do have a guarantee that we have federal funding if it's if it's approved tonight.
They will pay 65%.
Correct. That's the advantage of going now versus later. We would have to enter competitive programs in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Jacobs.
I I agree with Alder Stocker on almost all of his points, except one, which is I'm not willing to roll the dice and miss this opportunity of the 65% and not counting on being able to get that money later. If if we don't think that mass transit is the wave of the future, then I think that we've been wrong about all the other things that we've been talking about. And then for that reason, I'm in support, reluctant support, but support nonetheless.
All right, anybody else? Anybody else? I want to say that, to me, this is all about the future. If we were only looking at Sun Prairie for a year from now or five years from now, I'd say the same thing. And if we thought Sun Prairie wasn't going to grow, was, would be no need to make this kind of investment. Certainly, we wouldn't be interested in the BRT link by itself. And even now, we wouldn't be interested in the BRT link if we couldn't connect it with the local circulator. But we have before us a package of services that will meet the needs of this community far into the future. When we have meetings and and Mayor Rhodes Conway from Madison is talking to us, she tells us about how it is going to get so congested in downtown Madison, because jobs are going to continue to grow there. It'll be the heart of the county. You won't be able to afford to park your car down there. So what we're doing tonight isn't for the Sun Prairie of 2022 or even 2026. We're looking at the Sun Prairie of the future. And why should we feel that way? Well, they're telling us that it were going to be 50,000 people in less than 20 years. We're 36,000 now. And likely that 50,000 number is light, it'll, it'll be something more than that. That's the community that we need to provide for, and we need to have the foresight to do this. This has come to us as soon as Metro Transit chose to go out on on Hanson in the FedEx distribution center, that suddenly opened BRT up for us. I see this as a great opportunity we need to provide for and take advantage of. And we haven't mentioned the metro, the paratransit. So if we do the circulator, then we commit to or forced to commit to to paratransit. But there's a whole lot of people in this community that we hear about that are struggling to get around because of mobility limitations, and our existing shared ride taxi doesn't provide as well for that as we needed to. So that is another advantage of this in meeting our people in the community that don't always have the resources to solve these problems on their own, and they rely on us to do it. So it's no surprise to you that I would support this. You knew this coming into it this evening. And if I have the opportunity to vote on this, of course, I will vote in support of this. I I think this is, this has come our way from some fortuitous circumstances. And I celebrate that opportunity that comes to us. I'm so pleased that Madison and Metro Transit keeps us in mind and keeps looking to us and and helping. So with that, I believe we're ready to take a vote. If anybody else has a last comment, this is your opportunity. I see none, so we now have our our city clerk representative with us. Jennifer, would you please read the roll?
Polinsky.
Hi.
Stevens.
No.
Stocker.
No.
Crombie.
You're on mute.
Sorry about that. I. Guiant.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Jokich.
Hi.
McElroy.
No.
So it passes five to three. So Philip, we didn't mention this earlier, but we ought to clarify what we're doing tonight. This is sending a message to Metro Transit that we want to be part of it. But at this point, we have not executed a contract. We aren't asking city council to do that tonight, are we?
That is, that's correct. So this would signal to Metro that we would like to be part of their locally preferred alternative. So they would add us to their submittal package to the FTA. So we would be eligible for that federal funding. They have requested that we sign a third-party agreement, which is an FTA agreement committing to the service no later than May 31st.
Okay.
That would be coming before the council soon.
For the council, probably at their second meeting in May. And then, once we do that, we're committed.
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, thank you, Tom Lynch. Tom and I are on the MPO together, so I get to see him there frequently in this format. Ruben, of course, it's always a pleasure to see you back with us again. Hope everything is well with you. And Mike used to be with the MPO, weren't you, Mike, or with Carpsy? You were with MPO, and then went to to Metro. So thank you, Mike, for being with us as well. Tom, you wanted some closing, you want to make them now after we voted?
Yes, and I.
Maybe you ought to leave well enough.
I wish I had made them sooner.
Sorry.
That's okay. I just want to kind of reinforce that we value Sun Prairie as a partner. You know, when someone that lives in Sun Prairie makes a trip to their job, let's say on Greenway Cross in Fitchburg, they go across four different jurisdictions, right? But they don't think about, oh, now I'm in, you know, town of Wolverine Grove, or now I'm in the town, city of Madison. They just think I'm going to work and I'm going home, right? And that job benefits the region, and where they live benefits the region. And yet, because of the way our our state government works, we have to, we're forced to look at this not as a regional opportunity, but more as individual. We have to piece it together. And what Metro's done is we've pieced together partnerships, and and we really value Sun Prairie as a partnership. We believe that the the equity considerations, you know, many of the the people, you know, I was just speaking with someone who's from Ghana, you know, at one of our transfer points. And he was going to to serve a senior, he was doing senior care, right? And he, it was in the middle of the day, because a lot of our, a lot of the people that need transit, you know, work in the middle of the day or at night, and he was providing a service, right? And then he's paying taxes, and transit was helping to make the connection between the service and and taxes. And so as you, as you're being part of our partnership, you know, we appreciate the the service we can provide you, but we also appreciate that we we're connecting people with other people and other services. And that's important, just in itself.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we are going to move on. So we will be back to committee reports. And now, Teresa, we're going to do personnel committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At tonight's meeting at 5 o'clock, we passed a resolution approving the contract for recruitment services. This is for the vacant position of our
Economic Development.
We're replacing Neil. This, we were bringing it forward to council to approve for this.
All right, so you're making the motion, Teresa?
I'll make the motion to approve.
McElroy seconds.
Thank you, Terry. And discussion on this item? Is there any? Be none, Jennifer, let's get the roll.
I'm going to stand up. Alder Polinsky, you're on mute.
Whoops, hi.
Stevens.
Hi.
Stocker.
Hi.
Crombie.
Hi.
Guiant.
Hi.
Jacobs.
I'm voting aye, but I just want to make clear on the motion, there is no replacing Neil Stuckey.
Jokich. Yokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
And that passes eight oh. And now we'll move down to Public Works. And Maureen, we've got a few of them down here.
Yes, we do, but I'll refer you over to Alder Stocker.
I don't know why I did that, Steve. Sorry, I know you're the chair. Yeah, sorry. So let me rephrase this. We're moving on to Public Works. Steve, would you do these for us?
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay.
Sorry.
First item on the agenda for our Public Works tonight is speed limits. And this is an ordinance repealing and recreating section one zero dot one two dot zero zero one, speed limits in our city. This came about, just a real brief history. As we all know, we were saddened by the pedestrian fatality fatalities that have been occurring on Main Street. And I spoke to our city administrator. And wanted to get together public input on what we could do. And Aaron, in his wise mind, said, why don't we meet internally first and we'll form a pedestrian task force? So your notes say that there was two meetings, but from your notes, Aaron, I I read there's been three. And the work that this group has done, it's been a collaboration of Adam Schleicher from engineering, leading the pedestrian, or the police and. And Public Works and all entities to look at what we can do to improve the safety of our city and specifically on Main Street. This proposal that came forward is the initial proposal out of that task force. And that is to make. Our speed limit on the Main Street corridor, everything from Grove Street out to Ratman Road, all twenty five miles an hour. As you travel Main Street, you have seen it go from twenty five to thirty to thirty five and down to thirty and twenty five. As a motorist, you could be confused on where you're at. And by the time you hit another stop sign, you know, you could already be in a twenty five zone and not know it. So what they are attempting to do here is make some consistency on the Main Street corridor. And I fully support this. There is a follow up to the task force and there will be public input at a soon to be determined date. As soon as they figure out how they want to do it and what they want to discuss. But that and that component will be out there. But for now, what we're looking at is changing the speed limit consistently. This has our police backing. And if you were part of the Public Works Committee, you you know, I I I'm a fan of algebra. So can you see this?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, what that says is PS is either pedestrian safety or public safety. S is for speed, a consistent speed. But the other part of the equation is enforcement. And we have the complete commitment of our police that they will be enforcing this. Because to me, this is not, you're not going to get to the PS with just an S. You're going to need E in the equation. So we will have that commitment. So I would like to make a motion to change ordinance. Repeal and recreate the ordinance section ten dot twelve dot zero point one, speed limits to make Main Street a twenty five mile an hour consistent speed.
McElroy seconds.
McElroy second, so we've got a motion and a second. We're into discussion. Teresa Stevens?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just have a quick question about when we'll see signs being replaced indicating twenty five mile per hours.
Adam, what do you think?
You're on.
Yeah, so we have the signs on order. The longest lead time is those radar flashing signs. I'm told they'll be here in two to three weeks. So as soon as they show up, they'll be put up.
And if not, I have a can of spray paint and I'll take care of it.
Any additional discussion? Mike?
I reckon I'll probably be the only person who votes against this. And I don't want to stress that I'm not opposed to twenty five mile an hour speed limits. In fact, I I kind of thought they should always be that. And but I'm voting against it because, as I said before, without citizen input, this is a mistake to suggest that we have the solution. It also reeks of paternalism. I'm concerned about the enforcement issue because I fear that it will damage relationships between the police and the people who live in the element and that. And that vicinity. And to suggest that cars going too fast is the only problem is to completely ignore the jaywalking problem that is as significant or more significant than the speeding.
So I think people from the element have been involved in the committee, have they not? Aaron and and Adam. Barry, we were talking with Barry on Friday. He'd been part of it and given you some advice, he said, Adam.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that there aren't. Are there others, Aaron, that are citizen members?
I think Adam's been part of that. I'll let him him answer the.
Okay.
All three questions.
Maybe Steve's got some input on that. He's anxious to talk.
Yeah, there was actually, and to address Aldo Jacobs' question, there's actually a meeting of police and Public Works at the element. They brought lunch out and talked to the residents and. On board with it, it's just, but you are correct. Jaywalking is a problem. But there again, this is to address just one part of the problem. And I think speeding is part of it. If we can slow the vehicles down, it makes it easier or makes it, I give you, you give the opportunity of pedestrians to get out of the way. Much quicker than if cars are going much faster. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of parts to this puzzle, Mike. I I would agree, and there will be citizen input, but this is just part of it.
Well, if there has been citizen input, it's completely contrary to everything that I've been told has happened and was going to happen.
I know Barry's been involved with it, Mike. We were with him and he was telling me that he had had a hand in it and provided feedback. So and he's also a neighbor navigator, neighborhood navigator. So maybe you don't think of him as strictly a community person, but he lives in that community, the element, and it's right there. So Al, did I see your hand up?
You did, you did. So I'm glad you're getting these speed response signs. I had urged the council to buy them in bulk in the past. I repeat that, buy a bunch of them. But let me go to Steve Washington, Eldra. And in safety, and not that I'm Adam's expert, but I'll talk like I am anyway. The most important design, the second one is education. And the third most expensive and least effective is enforcement, because we can't afford fifteen cops throughout the city to meet the. So I will once again urge the future council to look seriously at speed humps. Many communities are using them. Sheridan Avenue in Madison has seven of them. Speeding disappeared. They don't have to enforce it at all. Not the speed bump that Mary and I saw a couple of years ago. It lasted one day on Thompson. That that would put you right through the roof of your car. But speed humps like on over at. West, not Westmount.
Thompson, wasn't it?
Heatherstone, is it? Over on the, in my district that I know so well, I forgot to. Anyway, you go watch that and the people slow down because they know that hump is coming. That's their twenty four hours a day. It's not the hundred thousand dollar cop that you're going to have writing tickets. So look at speed humps will slow your traffic down automatically. Thank you, done.
Anything more on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just mention a couple of things. One is, there was some things that the pedestrian safety task force wanted to tackle immediately and get some, some things addressed. And one of them is looking at the speed on Main Street. And the change that we're proposing is consistent with engineering looking at the speed limit and assessing it. And so those are things we think we could tackle quickly and make change and improve the safety quickly. We have involved neighborhood navigators, as you mentioned, Mayor. We've also involved the district liaison officers who are out in the community. We also have, the committee has a public relations plan, how to engage the community. We have a website space up for this as well and the ability for folks to interact with us and communicate with us. We've also received emails from residents who wanted to be involved in the in the discussions as well. So I guess I wanted to make sure the city council was aware that there's going to be short term, medium term, long term solutions, you know, involved here. And this is one that we could support from a technical standpoint, as far as the reduction in the the speed limit. But there's also other things that are going to be forthcoming, like crosswalk improvements that need to be made on Main Street. And so we will be, you know, continue to have discussions with residents about that. So I guess I wanted to make sure we, you know, gave a full discussion around that.
Okay, Steve?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Adam Schleicher for heading this up and ask, Adam, do you have any additional comments before we vote? You're on mute.
I do not, thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Jennifer, let's get the roll.
Polinsky?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Guyant?
No, because it doesn't have speed humps.
Jacobs?
No, for a different reason.
Yokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
Is that everybody, Jennifer?
That is, it passes six to two.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item?
Yeah.
Approved budget amendment and award contract twenty one zero zero one, North Bird West Main pedestrian improvements and museum sidewalk. On March twenty third, the Public Works Committee met to review the award contract of for twenty one zero zero one. Contract was awarded based on a budget amendment for work to be done on Bird Street concrete pavement, West Main. Street pedestrian improvements and the museum sidewalk project. I would like to make a motion to approve.
All right.
Alder McElroy seconds.
And we're into discussion on this item. Any discussion? I don't see anybody. Jennifer, let's do it.
Polinsky?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Guyant?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Yokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
But it passes eight oh.
Thank you. Next item, budget amendment and award of contract twenty one zero zero three for the Miller Street Trap Street reconstruction. Again, on March twenty third, the Public Works Committee met to discuss contract twenty one zero zero three. To award the contract. And there was a budget amendment for some additional. Borrowing for the sanitary sewer. And it was approved unanimously, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Polinsky will second it.
All right, and we're into discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? I don't see any, let's get the roll.
Polinsky?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Guyant?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Yokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
And it passes eight oh.
Okay, next item, budget amendment for contract twenty one zero zero five, payment rehabilitation. Again, on March twenty third, you know, the Public Works Committee has been busy. Public Works met to talk about and vote on a resolution approving a contract and budget amendment for contract twenty one zero zero five. For the twenty twenty one pavement rehab project. There was a need for a budget amendment because, again, storm sewer. Was for the budget, it was in the budget amendment for storm sewer changes. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
McElroy seconds.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? I see none, let's get the roll.
Polinsky?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Guyant?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Yokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
And that item passes eight oh. Now we're on to the Community Development Authority, Bob. We've. Got a resolution to approve budget amendment for the housing study and strategic. Housing study and strategy and and awarding a contract to Lakota Group of Chicago, Illinois.
Oh, Yokish, I'd be glad to take this one if you'd like me to.
Sure.
Okay. Yes, so I think you're all aware of the the fact that we budgeted some funds for a housing study in the twenty twenty budget. Those funds coming out of TIF eight and TIF eleven. Last, late last year, we issued the RFP. We had seven responses. We narrowed that down to four finalists that came into the CDA for presentations. And after discussion with the CDA and the scoring after the the presentations, the Lakota Group and SB Friedman were selected as the the team to move forward. We feel this is a strong team. Both firms have good reputations and we had a good experience with Lakota recently on the Sun Prairie Stronger Plan. So we're excited about working with them on the project. Base, the base contract that the Lakota bid on was just under our sixty thousand dollar budget. But there was an alternative bid that we had worked into the RFP to look more closely at four neighborhoods in the city. South Bird Street, Vandenberg, the Element and Schiller Street areas. And this kind of came out of some discussions that the city staff had had with the school district recently, concerns about high turnover in these neighborhoods, housing conditions, rental practices and so forth. So we're, we want to do a little deeper dive into those four neighborhoods to to be able to, I guess, gather more information about them. And then work some strategies into our overall housing strategy for dealing with those neighborhoods as well. So that alternative bid that was submitted by Lakota came in at just over twenty thousand dollars. And for that piece of the project, we will need a budget amendment. And that's wrapped into the resolution that's in in front of you this evening. We are proposing that that come out of fund balance and working with finance. They know that that will help maximize our position with respect to the expenditure restraint program for next year. So the CDA reviewed the contract itself last Thursday, talked through the project and recommended approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the contract or the process this evening.
Okay, so we need a motion, Bob. Maybe you want to make the motion to approve.
So do we need a separate motion for the budget also, or?
We've wrapped it into one resolution, so.
Move to approve the resolution presented.
Jacobs seconds.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Now we're into discussion. If you've got questions for Scott, we've got him here. Be no questions, we will go ahead with the vote, Jennifer.
Polinsky?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Guyant?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Yokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
And that passes eight oh.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, now we are on to Parks, Recreation and Forestry Commission. And this time, Maureen, I have it right.
Yes, you do. So this might be one of the easiest decisions that we've had to make tonight. So basically, staff was recently informed of the passing of Marlene Hire, a retired Sun Prairie English teacher and Sun Prairie resident. Marlene generously gave us an amount of forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents to the Sun Prairie Parks and Forestry Division. This money is available immediately and does not bear any restrictions on its use. And the Parks and Recreation and Forestry Commission feels that the funding should be utilized for items within our park system that provide a high level of benefit to as many community members as possible. Staff has identified two specific projects to utilize the donation for. A community garden project in Vandenberg Heights Park and a public art program within the park system. So staff would like to move forward on both of these projects and forward in the current fiscal year, which would require a budget amendment in the amount of forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy one dollars in the special revenue grants and donations account. We met on this on March twenty fourth and unanimously we voted to recommend the acceptance of this generous donation and the subsequent budget amendment for its use in the two thousand twenty one fiscal year. And I'll make a motion that we recommend the acceptance of this generous donation.
McElroy seconds.
All right, now we're into discussion. All right. Now we're into discussion on that. Terry?
I just want to share with you all. I did not know that she passed away. She was my English teacher. Wonderful human being, absolutely wonderful human being, strict as all get out. Always on you if you did not perform the way she knew you could perform. And she was also my pew buddy in church up until the pandemic. I did not know that she passed away. Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard some really good things about her.
She was great.
Any other discussion on this item? Steve?
Is this going to go along with like a, hopefully like a naming rights to the garden or whatever? I would, I would hope that her name gets promoted in there somehow.
Yeah, we had talked about that in the Parks Recreation and Forestry Commission. So Kristen is, knows about that. And she agreed with us too. So I can, I'll make sure to make sure that Kristen is going to do something about that, but I'm sure she is.
Good. Thank you.
I don't know if Kristen's on tonight, but.
He is.
He is.
He's down the bottom square on my screen.
Yeah, Kristen's right here with us. So she's nodding her head in agreement with you, Maureen.
Okay.
All right. So no other discussion on this? Let's get the roll.
Polinsky?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Guyette?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Jokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
That passes eight oh. And then we are moving down to new business. And we have item A under action required and then small A, resolution approving temporary outdoor dining facility with alcohol adjacent to Full Mile Beer Company and Kitchen through October 20th, 2021. So Scott, does this take any explanation? Or Tim is on here, one of you two, or is it clear with just what it says, Tim?
This, this should be fairly straightforward. We had reached out to the five operators who had done this previously. We had heard back from a couple of them and Nathan with Full Mile was the only one who had pursued this. So it's, it's a pretty straightforward request, operating through October 20th.
Okay, all right. So if we can get a motion to approve this.
Move to approve?
Somebody make a motion. Thank you, Bob, because you've been interested in this. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Maureen. So now we're into discussion on the motion. Is there any discussion? I see none. Jennifer, let's get the roll.
Polinsky?
Hi.
Stevens?
Hi.
Stocker?
Hi.
Crombie?
Hi.
Guyette?
Hi.
Jacobs?
Hi.
Jokish?
Hi.
McElroy?
Hi.
And that passes eight oh. So now we are down to referrals to the committee of the whole. Are there, Steve?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. And I see Kristen is still on. Kristen Grissom. I'd like to, I'd like to address this kind of the, probably Parks and Forestry, Maureen. Tonight, you saw on the consent agenda, a order for, for trees. And average cost, I believe, came in at like around $150 per tree. My referral is to possibly look, I mean, to look into the possibility of having our forestry person actually start a, like a nursery. We have plenty of land, whether it's a park or the new land that we just bought up by the wastewater treatment plant. And look at putting in some of the more popular seedlings and nurturing them. And in the future, when we need trees for our street project, actually could be a personal touch. People could go out and like they pick a Christmas tree, pick the tree they want and have it delivered to their yard. I think it would add a lot of pers, personal touch to it. Plus, I mean, when you extend the cost out for the number of trees we go through a year, I think as a revenue or an expense saving to the city, I think this might be a good possibility to buy the trees when they're young. We have plenty of, especially out by the wastewater treatment plant. It's very wet out there. I think they would grow well, if not too fast. And I'd like to make that referral.
All right. Any other referrals? I see none. Then we're on to announcements. Any announcements?
Just like to thank Aldo Guyette again for your service.
Yeah. Al, this is your final meeting. So we've all appreciated you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We've got Tina Bowley with us this evening. So we'll expect to see her at our next meeting on April 20th. All right. So with that and.
Mike has a, Mike has one.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to announce that starting on Thursday is National Mung Month. In, and the Mung are the largest Asian population in Wisconsin. So hopefully we'll be able to see some things happen with that this month. Thank you.
All right, good. Well, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn, Stocker.
Is there a second?
Jacobs will second.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Pose nay, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.